I haven't heard anything.
I know, I emailed.
Yeah, it's been gone quiet, basically, since the thomber.
I know.
Which I think is a good thing.
Yeah.
It's gone quiet?
Well, they did, but the reservation, so.
Oh, I talked to.
We heard nothing.
Terry Mader?
Oh, good, no problem, okay, never mind. Oh, good, we don't have.
Well, I emailed her.
I made it.
Hopefully she's been coming. I said, I haven't heard anything. I have people calling me and wanting to know what the deal is. So, if somebody did tell me yesterday that the cost of businesses, I'm sorry. Give a moment, they've been, you know, so. Hopefully be wrapped up. So can they handle all 50 million people on the site? You know, if they put all the works on there, so.
Thank you for being here.
Maybe she'll, I haven't gotten news yet, but it'd be great to get some feedback.
The interior's been a massive secretary in the interior.
Well, it could be, who knows when. All right, well, I'm just concerned because the international people will be getting their books for 2020 ready in their raids, and if she can't just bring that on us.
Yeah.
They have to know, you know, early 2019, what the deal is, so many.
Well, economic assessment or analysis is supposed to come out. Sit down and follow.
Yeah, November or nothing.
And then I think they said it was going to come out next year. Usually that's because you can tell them what they want to decide.
Evan's ready to be called, therefore, shall we call him or would he call us?
Hello, Lemon.
Hey, Ruth, we're not recording this yet, but don't you want to?
Oh, good, great, thank you.
There's Evan. Turn off. One more minute, we can start. Okay. Right, four. Are we ready? Are we ready? The time is 4:00. I'm calling to order this Grand County Municipal Building Authority Special Meeting. It is Tuesday, December 18th, 2018. Present, Greg Holliday, Councilmember, Curtis Wells, Councilmember, Mary McGann, Councilmember, Terry Morris, Councilmember, and on the phone, we have Evan Clapper, Councilmember. We also have with us at podium Ruth Dillon, County Administrator, and Chris Baird, taking Diana Carroll's place as County Clerk Auditor. Approval of minutes.
Are we in the MBA meeting?
Yes, that's the first meeting. Here, do you want to look at it?
Seven minutes from the board, so I move to approve the minutes from the October 4th meeting. Second.
Okay, motion by Curtis Wells to approve the minutes from this October 4th meeting, and seconded by Terry Morris. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, I will call for a vote. All in favor of approving the minutes for October 4th, 2018, raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye, or say aye. Evan?
Aye.
Okay, passes 5 to 0. Discussion item or action item? Ratifying action.
Did you want to postpone those other meetings?
Oh, yes, thank you. Entertain a motion to postpone the minutes from December 5th.
So moved.
And that's 2017.
2017. Move.
So moved.
Second.
That's, okay.
I won't even care, so I can't do that.
Yeah, I can't yell at you. December, that's, 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 that's a long ways off. I mean, that's too bad. Okay, motion by Curtis Wells to postpone the minutes from December 5th, 2017, seconded by Greg Holliday. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, passes unanimously, 5 to 0.
How many MBA meetings have we had since that date?
Not enough. We only had one, I think.
Well.
But that's, that's.
So we don't know how long it's.
Okay, we've had the minutes that got approved, I think, was the next one, since that one. But when you get to it, I'll explain this next agenda item.
Okay. Presentations, there are non-discussion items, non-action item, and consideration. Ratifying actions taken inadvertently by the Grand County Council rather than by the Municipal Building Authority regarding funding of design and construction of a detention basin for Jackson Streets mitigation. County Council Meeting of May 16th, 2017, June 6th, 2017, September 19th, 2017, November 8th, 2017, August 7th, 2018, and October 2nd, 2018.
So because the Municipal Building Authority made application to the CIB for that grant, all of those meetings that were held on the council agenda should have been held under the MBA, the Municipal Building Authority's agenda. And so really, the best thing that we can do at this point is just to ratify those as the Board of the Municipal Building Authority.
Okay, so with that being said, I would move to ratify any actions taken related to the Jackson Street Detention Basin project that were inadvertently approved in a Grand County Council meeting.
Motion by Curtis Wells, seconded by Greg Holliday. Discussion. So we have the situation figured out now?
Well, I mean, it's the best, it's the best that we can do. The project's already underway, and so hopefully this will suffice to, it's kind of a matter of the audit, and so hopefully this will suffice to make sure that the MBA approve all the necessary steps.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Evan? Are you still with us, Evan? Aye. Oh, he's still with us. Passes 5 to 0.
Motion to adjourn.
So move. A motion by Curtis Wells.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. We will now move to, which one's second, Thompson Fire. I am now opening, the time is 4:06. We are opening the Thompson Springs Special Service Fire District Administrative Control Board Special Meeting, Tuesday, December 18th, 2018. Present, Greg Holliday, Curtis Wells, Mary McGann, Terry Morris, Ruth Dillon, and Chris Baird. Approval of minutes for, I've got to get to my new bills.
Motion to approve the minutes from the December 4th meeting.
Second.
Just discussion? Motion by. Excuse me? Anyway, motion by Curtis Wells, seconded by Greg Holliday. There's no discussion, all in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. I have, the fire warden, Markham, could not, Chief Markham could not be here, so I will read the.
We've got bills.
Oh, yes, we do need bills. Thank you.
I would move to pay the total bills dating from November 21st to December 18th, total of $888.11. That's total bills and payroll.
Total bills and payroll.
Second.
Motion by Curtis Wells, seconded by Greg Holliday. Discussion on the Thompson Springs Fire District Bills. Roll call vote, Greg Holliday?
Aye.
Curtis Wells?
Aye.
Terry Morris, aye. Mary McGann, aye. Evan? Evan Clapper? Yes. Okay. The motion to ratify the bills for the Thompson Springs Fire District passed unanimously, 5 to 0. Okay, thank you for pointing out my skip. The report by Chief Markham. He attended propane hazards fire training on December 7th and 8th in Richfield, extremely educational, lots of hands-on scenarios. Blower fan for bay heater repaired again, now appears to be working fine. Chief was interviewed for county assessment process on 12/11. Job description for chief and cleaning person created and submitted to the Human Resource Department. Application for surplus wildland fire equipment submitted to VOM. Very quiet for Thompson, no rest on the highway, so that's good. There's the report for Thompson Springs. Now, we are into new business, approving proposed interlocal agreement between Thompson Springs Special Service Fire District and Grand County for administrative services, postponed from September, December 4th. Yes?
So I would move to approve the proposed interlocal agreement between Thompson Springs Special Service Fire District and Grand County for administrative services, and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Motion by Curtis Wells. Seconded by Terry Morris. Discussion. I hope we can get a board out in Thompson soon for Thompson Springs. Okay, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, passes unanimously, 5 to 0. Approving proposed job description for the fire chief and cleaning maintenance worker position.
So I would move that we approve the proposed job descriptions for the fire chief and cleaning maintenance worker positions.
Motion by Curtis Wells. Seconded by Terry Morris. Questions? Seeing none, I call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Adopting proposed resolution approving the amendment, amended 2018 budget. Chris?
Is there a presentation on this?
Nope, we only had that.
Okay, so I would move to approve the proposed resolution approving the amended 2018 budget and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Motion by Curtis.
Second.
Seconded by Greg Holliday. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Adopting proposed resolution approving the 2019 budget.
Motion to approve the proposed resolution approving the 2019 budget and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Motion by Curtis. Seconded by Terry. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously, 5 to 0.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are now to. What was the first?
CRA.
CRA, thank you, there it is. The time is 4:12. We are opening the Grand County Community Reinvestment Agency Special Meeting. It is Tuesday, December 18th, 2018. Present are Greg Holliday, Curtis Wells, Mary McGann, Terry Morris, Ruth Dillon, and Chris Baird.
Aye.
And Evan. Evan on the phone, I'm sorry, Evan. Okay, we have, I've got to get to mine, somebody else must have theirs up already. Approval of minutes for May 1st. Oh, there are no minutes.
I haven't seen any.
No, there aren't any minutes.
Motion to postpone the approval of minutes until the next CRA meeting?
So, okay. Motion to postpone the approval of minutes for May 1st, 2018, September 18th, 2018, and December 4th, 2018.
Second.
Okay, motion by Curtis, seconded by Greg Holliday. Discussion. All in favor of postponing the minutes?
Aye.
Passes unanimously, 5 to 0. Action item, we know presentations or discussion items. Reviewing and adopting proposed agency bylaws postponed from December 4th, 2018. Zachariah.
Okay, so Adam Long, Attorney of the Smith-Hart Institute, provided legal counsel on the CIB, and staff, is awaiting a phone call because he, as I mentioned in the last meeting, can answer questions if you have, still takes a conversation on how these bylaws are needed, but I did not anticipate any council members calling in. So we have two options, I guess, one of them is to, can we call another number with Evan on the line, and we leave this out of the conference line? Okay, so, another option, yeah, I think that's probably the best option.
Cell phone, would that work?
Well, I could call him on our cell phone.
Put the cellphone next to a mic?
You could put it next to that one right there.
Adam is ready to call in, so if Evan is okay hanging up and calling the conference line, I think it's probably going to be the best for the audio.
Do you have?
Do you have the? Call back when.
What?
Well, there's a. I think the easiest, Evan, is if you hang up and call into the conference line, and then we can just keep that open for the remainder of the day.
Okay, I don't have the conference line, Adam, I have my finger just here.
Do you have something to write it down?
Uh, yeah, go ahead, hold on.
Okay, it's 435. 259. 4138.
Right, I'm okay.
Wait, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. When prompted, you'll need to select conference line 1, and then the passcode is 123456.
Uh, I don't know why I didn't say call, what was that?
Okay, so I'm going to hang up and slip in the conference line now. Okay, so while we are waiting for Adam and Evan to call in, just bring you all back up to speed in terms of where we're at. So, as a limited purpose local government entity, the community reinvestment agency is required to have bylaws. At the last meeting, the agency requested postponing the act. Okay, Evan's there, we're waiting for Adam to call in. Just bringing the council up to speed, Evan. So we're in the agency meeting right now, so I'm going to refer to you all as the agency. At the last agency meeting, a vote was passed to postpone any discussion or action on the bylaws so that the agency members could get, you know, a little bit more first of the agency and the draft bylaw document, and have a more substantial conversation about desire changes and, you know, all various issues that go into establishing bylaws, policies and procedures, and so that's where we're at today. As soon as Adam calls in.
I am here, I live up 5 seconds ago.
Okay, so we have attorney Adam Long on the phone, and I think at this point, I'll just pass it over to Adam, who will provide a little bit more introduction to the document.
The document that at least has started, is basically a generic set of agency bylaws that are considered correct, that bylaws for agencies, goal is to have bylaws rather than legal requirements, our goal is to have bylaws, because one, it makes the agency think about all of these things that eventually he thought about upfront, and two, it hits the question down the road, and think, okay, whose job is this, or how does this work, or can we get a new county clerk, do we have to reappoint that agency secretary? The goal is just to cover all those, how do you meet type items? And to the extent possible, we generally like to see it front, just like the county front, so no one's learning new processes for no reason. So that's the only real goal of the bylaws. I'm happy to answer questions or go through them point by point. My suspicion is, we need to look, take a look and let these percolate a little bit, make sure they fit with how things work in Grand County. Zachariah will be ready to chime in if I say anything's wrong. And obviously, you can amend it from time to time, for example, with the form of government changes, bylaws likely changes, too. Just take care of, you just reflect reality at that point. But I'm happy to answer questions. Zachariah, if I can add, clear anything, let me know.
So I went through the template that you sent me about a year ago, you know, in the, I mean, I would say, over the summer, as agency actions were starting to take shape, you know, amended it to the degree that I felt appropriate for Grand County to achieve that objective of having the agency function pretty similarly to, you know, the way the county already works, both at the council level and at the staff level. In the document that I emailed you probably not too long ago, just before the meeting, that's the document that is in front of the agency today. There are several comments in there, you know, that I felt might need a little bit of additional attention, just given the infrastructure of Grand County, but beyond that, I didn't have any changes that I felt were necessary, so.
Yeah, I could, you know, to be helpful, I could go through it and respond to these comments, and it sounded like there had been pretty close to being ready to be adopted.
I had a question, did you have a question?
Yeah, I've got a question.
Okay, I had a question on the voting. Does, in the voting, does all the voting require roll call? Is how I read it.
That's not the intention, requires everything, all the agency votes to be roll call votes, you know, that's one word, we just do it the same way the county does. I mean, we have something that particularly is roll call vote, we love to, that's, do roll call vote, but again, probably the right answer is to have a mandatory count of progress.
Okay, so you're talking about page 9, F, manner of voting?
Mm-hmm.
Would you like to see a change?
Well, to me, that reads that all voting is roll call.
It says it must be by roll call.
We just do roll call for ordinances and money and, just money, anytime it has to do with finances.
So what would the language be there instead of by roll call, it could be by?
Show of hands.
Voice or showing of hands?
Maybe even say something else, maybe by roll call, and just register the chair.
I wonder if it'd be worthwhile to go through where the comments were on the draft that we received. I know that there were some specific questions about whether the way it was written violated some of the council bylaws, there were some questions about the fiscal year versus the calendar year, and I wonder if we should go through and bank it out real quick.
Yeah, I'll have, I'm happy to talk through those. The first one is, section 2A, agency officers' comment is, check for legality, given all the council bylaws, individual. Generally, in practice, based on the county agencies, from agency to state, not having a lot of balls in the air. of balls in the air. We probably only really need to appoint an agency secretary, that's probably the fourth one, because the secretary is gonna sign the adestation line of the resolution that helps you kind of keep things running smoothly. The chair of the county council, who's the chair of the agency, vice chair, so that's a big deal. The agency finance director, treasurer, nothing in statute requires us to appoint a particular people or a particular officer in those positions. So if we wanted to pair this down and say, you know, the council chair and vice chair are the same on the agency board and the county clerk or council administrator and agency secretary, I think that gives the job that is fine for us this time.
I have a question, Mary.
Yes.
So are these officers the voting members of this board?
That's where my confusion is.
I was under the impression that the council members were the board, but the way that it's written, that's not the case.
No, it's not.
So which is it?
Does that make sense, Adam?
You'll have to repeat that a little while.
So my question is, the way that the bylaws are written is that, I was under the impression that the council, the county council members were the board of this agency and the voting members, but that's not how it's, that's not how it's drafted in here. The officers are different from the county council.
Right. So the first sentence says, "The officers of the agency are the chair, vice chair, the secretary, the treasurer, and the executive director." But other than the chair and vice chair, those other positions are not actually council members or agency board members?
Yeah, they could be, it's really either positions that are not required by statute if one agency run this way, we just want people to those positions and give the roles and responsibilities. If not, things get, with the relatively few balls here that the agency has, I think your file is making the chair and vice chair and secretary automatic based on the rules of positions in county and county.
I believe a treasurer is, is statutorily required, isn't it?
Did you hear that?
I'm only saying this.
Oh, sorry. I was under the impression that a treasurer is a statutory requirement of a board.
It's not, it's not, at least not the redevelopment statute is not. You don't have to appoint an agency secretary.
But who's?
I guess what I'm saying is, my point is that if, if the officers are going to be the members of the county council, then the members of the county council need to assume whichever of these roles you decide to go with. Otherwise, you know, the officers, as it's spelled out right here, is only partially county council members. And so I'd assume that the officers constitute the voting membership of this agency.
So the concern is that if there are, the document names officers of the agency, but some of those officers are not actually council members. So I think what I'm hearing, and correct me if I'm wrong, Adam, but if the agency, you know, wants to go this route, a simpler avenue would be to say that the agency has a chair and a vice chair, which are the same as the chair and the vice chair of the county council?
Yeah.
And the clerk auditor is the agency secretary? And is that it? That's all that's statutorily required or needed?
Yeah, I think that would be fine. And we probably retitle this agency board and officers. At that point, then, it's not clear whether we're talking about governing or members or officers.
Yeah.
So does that mean that the secretary has a vote? Is there, are there three voting members of this then, if we do it that way?
The agency board is the county council. That's my statute, so we're stuck with that. What do you like or not?
So we need to clear up the language around the officers, because the officers are clearly not the voting members of the board.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
So I'd just like to point something out then. I was never asked to be the secretary of this board. I'm certainly willing, if the agency is interested in establishing an agreement with the county, as other political subdivisions have, of entering into an agreement for bookkeeping, which really wouldn't function through the treasurer's office, it would be more through the clerk auditor's office. I'd be interested in performing that function. However, I just have to say I'm not necessarily interested in being secretary of this particular board. But I will, you know, like I said, I am interested if the board will establish an agreement with the county for an administrative fee to take on the role that's spelled out in here as treasurer.
So you would, but we need an interlo, like an inter-agency agreement, right?
That would be, correct me if I'm wrong, Adam, but couldn't that be spelled out in the interlocal agreement that's signed between the county and the agency?
I think what I caught, we're asking whether, basically whether the agency's gonna pay for county services.
Correct.
That's just the conversation.
Yeah.
It certainly can, and it depends on how, sort of how sophisticated the structure is, and your internal county is. The agency is technically separately, you see, in day-to-day function, it works basically like a county department. And the agency's financial report gets rolled into the county's comprehensive financial report. So it does make, and I'm speaking as a former CPA, it does make conceptual sense to have, basically, the agency or have some sort of interdepartmental transfer to take care of costs that are specifically agency-related. The question is whether the dollar figures fall just by the half of the budget. But it's definitely, it's definitely sound.
And then the agency's budget, at least the proposed budget, that the council, that the agency adopted by resolution and the council by ordinance, does include that 5% administrative fee coming out?
Yep, exactly. That's a part of those expenses.
Is that, is that clear to-
Yeah.
It sounds like it's clear that we have a treasurer, but yet, at this point, and I don't know if it's important to spell it out in this document, we do not have a secretary.
So, I mean, the reason why I bring this up is because, just for the, for continuity's sake, we have now three special service districts that are administered in the way that I'm proposing. And so it would help me to have this fourth independent political subdivision interact with the, with the county in the same way that the other three do.
Yeah, makes sense. And who do those boards use as their secretary? Just somebody on staff or?
Yeah, it would be a staff member appointed as secretary to take minutes, and then, like just what we approved for the fire district, the agreement is for bookkeeping, payroll, HR, and then I believe that Ruth or Briney takes the minutes, puts those things together. And so I would just say, carrying along in that same fashion with this independent entity would be easiest because it would be the same process for all of them that we have, as opposed to coming up with something entirely different for this one than the other three.
Sure. For whatever it's worth, I mean, that seems workable to me. I don't, I'm not throwing up my head, I deserve a secretary right now, but it seems like we should, I mean, it seems like we could find somebody on staff to do that. Get them assigned, one of my staff persons just yet to do that, but I think that's possible to have our community on the phone specialist serve as that secretary.
They would be pretty involved in this agency, right? Your department?
Yeah, but that individual's going to be involved anyways, so.
That would make sense.
You know, makes sense to have that individual attending this, so I'm a little hesitant to, you know, offer that 100% right now, but I think that's the direction.
So on the document, we could just say assigned secretary?
So are we comfortable approving this with the, we're gonna clean up Section 2A under officers, but we've discussed our way around this a couple times. We all understand, you know, that we need to spell out who the board is in that section. Are we comfortable with adopting this and instructing them to make those changes, or do we need to bring this back up again? Because I'm comfortable with the document now.
There is, yeah. Terry has a couple questions.
So Adam, on paragraph, I mean, on Section 5, Paragraph C reads, "Boundaries and territorial jurisdictions of the agency are coexistive with the incorporated area of the city, and as such, county boundaries may be amended from time to time." Should city be county?
Yeah, that'd definitely be county.
Okay, thank you. So I'd like that change made. And then, if you, we'd be so kind as to explain to me in Paragraph I of that same section in Section 5, under appropriations, what is the logic behind having monies that pass from the county to the agency be either grants and loans, and monies that go the other way be grants only?
Mostly it's a matter of who has deeper pockets and how the money goes flow, I think, just typically, if who we set up an agency, we, sometimes we see a formal loan or contribution or some sort of basically see money from the county just to cover the agency expenses, you know, IP, Zachariah's time, if you're gonna split things, stuff like that. And that's sort of just payback, some of it's not. If we see money going from the agency to the county, that's just money that you have the agency, not something the county can pay back.
Yeah, I understand that part of it, but I'm not sure I, not, and it's not a big point. It's a logical question that doesn't seem to ring true to me, but that's fine. I mean, I'm fine with it. That's the traditional handling of it.
Any other questions, Terry?
I don't, thank you.
I would move to adopt the proposed community reinvestment agency bylaws with the, with the changes made to Section 2A mentioned and Section 5C correction from city to county, and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
And also the one on all As and, okay. Those were the three we talked about needing change?
What was the last one you mentioned?
More, it said that all votes would be roll call.
Instead of roll call, it may be roll call.
Okay.
The discretion of the chair, otherwise just by a sharing.
And at the rate we speak, you have a term, you should match this to Section, five, Section B this year, that should match the county's this year?
Yes.
Yeah, I was gonna bring that up because it requires that the budget be adopted by December 15th, which would indicate that they're expecting the agency to operate on a calendar year.
Okay, anything else? Yes.
I have a question. Can you, can you tell me the difference between the treasurer, the purchasing agent, and the finance director? Seems like they're all doing the same thing.
The short answer is those work however you and the agency board decide they should. Now, if you wanna have a purchasing agent and a treasurer and a finance director, that's great. As I've said before, it's, you know, it's very likely you don't have enough agency business that happens on a regular basis, where we assign equal to those roles, you know, unlike the agency does a lot of purchasing of the pay, buy bills, pay consulting bills or something like that. It, it can work however you'd like, whatever makes the most sense from, from the agency perspective, whatever makes the most sense with how Grand County operates.
Okay, any further discussion?
Did you get a second on that?
We had a motion. Do it, no, we, yes. We got a motion by Curtis Wells, seconded by Terry Morris. Any more questions or discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? Greg, are you voting for it?
No.
Evan Clapper?
Aye.
Aye. Passes four to one. Greg Halliday opposed. Thank you.
All right, we'll work that out after.
Okay, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded?
Thank you, Adam.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye, thank you, Adam.
Okay, aye, okay, we will move to, did we get all three of them done now?
Yeah.
Yes. Again, okay, we are calling to order this meeting, the Grand County Council Regular Meeting, Tuesday, December 18th, 2018. Present, Greg Halliday, Curtis Wells, Mary McGann, Terry Morris, Attorney Andrew Fitzgerald, Ruth Dillon, and County Administrator and Clerk Auditor in Diana Carroll's place, Chris Baird. We will call for a pledge of allegiance. Peggy, would you do the pledge for us?
Sure. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, approval of minutes. I can't, I gotta get back to that agenda. We had-
I would move to approve the minutes, October 2nd, 30th, November 7th, 20th, 26th, and December 4th.
Okay, motion by Curtis Wells to approve the minutes for, excuse me.
Sorry, I was gonna open up Jaylen's email, our-
I have some corrections.
Dedicated Minute Hawk, and-
Okay, so you're approving what we have, minutes for October 2nd, October 30th, correct?
So on, on the October 30th minutes, she's stating the meeting starts at 5:00, adjourns at 4:25. Tony arrives at 5:40. Times need to coordinate. So if the meeting's adjourning at 4:25 and Tony's listed as arriving at 5:40, that doesn't pencil up. November 7th, substitute motion is spelled wrong, she says, in parentheses, I know it's sort of picky. November 26th, let's see, she's saying she arrived at 1:55, as opposed to what's, it lists her as absent. December 4th is suggesting changes to the October 16 minutes from IMU. Not sure what I actually said, but I meant it to be changed Moab to Price. Not sure what I actually said, but I meant it to be change Moab to Price, to Moab to Salt Lake City, rather than the way it's reading, which is Salt Lake to Price, which is in reference to the rail I'm thinking. So, my motion stands with those changes.
I have a couple, okay, Terry?
I just have one omission on December 4th meeting on the General Counsel reports. To my recollection, I did report on the mosquito maintenance, which was.
And anything else?
That's it.
And I've looked at it again, but on November 7th, Terry is not listed as being present, but then he's talked about later on in the meeting. But it just says that Councilmember, I opened the meeting, Clapper, Halliday, Hawks, Wells, and Councilmember Rory Paxman is absent, but Terry Morris isn't mentioned.
And he was there.
And he was there. So, that, and I had a question on, let me see if I can find which one it was, the Joint City Council meeting. It says the Joint City Council meeting was in the chambers on the top, and then, never mind, I, there was just, no, that wasn't where it was. Now, on the October 30th meeting, that was the meeting that was held at the city chambers. And I did not call that meeting to order. That was called to order by Emily Neehouse. It says that I, the meeting was called to order by Chair McGann at 5:10, in attendance, and they named everybody, but when the meetings are at the city, the city runs it, and when it's at the county, the county runs it. So, I did not open that meeting, Emily Neehouse did. Don't think I had any other corrections, but those were the ones I found. Let me go through and check real fast. Any other corrections? All in favor of approving? Did you get a second? Yes.
Sorry.
I think Terry did. Terry did. Curtis Wells mited the motion to approve the minutes, and Terry seconded it. And then we went and opened it for discussion. And we read Jaylen's notes, and then mine, and then Terry had one correction. We got all the corrections.
Yeah.
All in favor of approving the minutes as amended?
Aye.
Aye. Evan?
Aye.
passes five to zero. Okay. Ratification of payment of bills.
Well, I move we pay our total bills at $1,031,439.89, total payroll $246,366.94, to a total of $1,277,806.83, and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Motion by Curtis Wells?
Second.
Seconded by Greg Halliday. Discussion. Seeing none, I'll call for a roll call vote. Let's start with Evan.
Yes.
Okay. Greg Halliday?
Aye.
Curtis Wells?
Aye.
Mary McGann? Yes. Terry Morris?
Yes.
That passes five to zero. General Counsel reports and future considerations. Greg Halliday?
Okay, on the 6th of December, I attended the BLM meeting. That was unexpected. Christina Price has moved back up to Salt Lake. There's a temporary manager in there now. I apologize for not catching his name, but he is temporary, he's not permanent. So, nothing, nothing transpired at that, at that meeting. I just introduced myself, gave the new acting manager my card, and told him that this is the day we usually have a meeting. Okay, so that's all there was with that. On the 11th of December, I attended the Transportation Special Service District. We approved bills. Also, there was an application to be on the board from Ashley Wareham. That was, that was approved by the, by the members that were there. We're getting low. We're having, one of the members is terminated his membership as of the last meeting, so we're down to three members. If Ashley Wareham is approved, then that will bump us back up to four. We have to have three to have a, have a quorum. So, that's all we have on transportation. Also attended the Thompson Special Service District. That's, that's the water board up in, up in Thompson. The Springs are putting out pretty good water. Due to the time of year, there's only 23 gallons a minute going into the actual tank. The Springs are producing 76 gallons a minute. They elected a new chair, or continued, they elected the chair, the treasurer, which would be the same ones, H.A. Rogers and his wife, Brenda. And that's all I've got.
Okay. Evan? Do you have anything to report?
Sure, I can, I'm with the Sand Flat Committee, and there was a lot of talk about new campground design. This night we had a lot of the employees there working on the ground day to day up there and getting their input, and that was great. We're continuing to look at the increased use of the housing bench, commercial outfitter and street style, informally, you know, I'm asking for some changes there. We're trying to correct them to age and informal process. So, there's other, but Sand Flat is doing great. We got this report from Andrea. Also, let's see, I was unable to attend the show next meeting, but that was well attended by other members of the county. And we'll talk about some of those positions later in the agenda, as well as begin that interloper agreement that we've had nine months later, what the hot topics of that, and just really trying to catch where we're going to end, and get all the ducks in a row for the transition at the end of the year. And Andy's been taking the first full time, but is still actively involved in that transition process, so I feel really good about that. And that's all I've got for now.
I've nothing to report.
Okay. I'll make my homeless coordinating committee, it's a little concern about our homeless community this year, because we no longer have inexpensive or motels that haven't been upgraded, where in the past, we had places that would be willing to take our homeless on the very cold evenings, so we're working on trying to work through that issue. I've been working with John Curtis's office, and we're closer to making sure that the veterans in Grand County get their housing vouchers, which hasn't been happening, because the vouchers are processed through Colorado, and the, they've all been going to Colorado. But we think we're closer to figuring out the snafu that was causing that to happen. Solidway Special Service District, I don't know if anybody's driven by to see that we had an impaired driver take down our fence and part of our gate, which the county ended up having to pay for because it's county fence, but anyway, that was quite adventurous. And we will be installing a, what is known as, what is a ticket booth, but is commonly referred to as the shack, up at Moab Landfall will be replaced with a decent building, so I'm very excited about that. And we've made an offer for, to a person for a new district manager, and hopefully, that person takes it. I'll be introducing him to you at one of the meetings in next month. That's all I have to report. I have more, but I'm cutting it short. Terry?
So, I attended the planning and zoning meeting on, actually, there was one on the 11th, and there was talk about dark skies, the city not being ready to consider that. They discussed the HDH a little bit, and, you know, the design standards and so on and so forth, and there was a discussion about Red Cliff Platte and, and another subdivision that was in front of them, and there wasn't really very, very much done other than that on that meeting, but then they, we had a special meeting on the 16th where they discussed and took action on the Lake Lane replat, which changed a lot of descriptions from one lots one and two to one A and one B, which is actually a very good idea, so that there's not misinterpretation in the, in the recording of plats in that area, of the Lake Lane area. Then Red Cliff Ranch replat out on Colorado, they changed the plat to show what's on the ground, and the winery was broken out and platted separately. And that was the crux of that meeting. There was also discussion after the adjourn on what the county was doing on the, on the HDH, and I tried to update them on what we discussed during our last meeting. The Recreation Special Service District met, and we talked about, Steve Swift gave us a great report on the, on the Spanish Arena, which you'll hear from him today, and the approval of the amended 2018 budget, approval of the 2019 budget, and the 2019 meeting dates, and then the ratification of bills payable. So, that was a very straightforward, short, short meeting. Housing Task Force, more updating on what's happened in the city with the passing of the Waho and the P A D stuff, conversation about the additions to the HDH in that conversation. Then, a lot of talk about the city and the C2 zoning issue, which has since been rectified. And then, conversation about more public outreach for what the Housing Task Force is actually doing. So, that was, that was a good meeting, and I think there was a lot of good discussion. And the Council on the Aging, that was a great meeting. The budget, approved the budget, and ordered a new, approved the ordering of new truck, Christmas party tickets being sold, and then there was a, an accounting of how the Grand Center is being used, and it's getting a lot of use, so that was also an enjoyable meeting. That's all I have.
Thank you. Andrew? Ruth?
I do have a few things, actually. Our needs assessment is moving right along. Our third-party consultant was in three days last week, two days with all the districts, all but one actually got interviewed for an hour each. The sheriff and someone else from the sheriff's office, oh, I think it was his chief lieutenant were, went out and they got to see some space together, since the sheriff has some pretty dire state staffing, or space needs, as well as staffing needs. And then, the consultant also spent a day with the city staff. So, we should be hearing back a little more, you know, we're expecting a March recommendation meeting, but anyway, things are coming together on that. Another item, we have a new hire in the county council's office, part-time. Will start January 2nd, so we plan to introduce you to her then. And also effective January 1st is the date that the building department officially splits, where the county, our building department has been doing city and county permits, as you know, for many, many years, and the city has hired their own building official, and January 1st is the magic date for splitting all that. So, we're working out the details of a couple of large projects right now as to whether the county will continue to do that and then build a city, and the city's fine with that, or whether the county would rather the city take that on and try to have a seamless transition. So, we're working through that little piece. Other than that, I'm on vacation after this meeting through the rest of the year, and I'll see you next year. All I got.
Chris? I would entertain a motion to move to Item H, because I know there's a lot of people here that came just for the recognition of the year and then go back to the presentation.
So, move.
Okay, thank you, because I hate, it's been much longer than usual, and I apologize to the people who came here and.
I told them four can't be here.
And so, I apologize, I did not realize how long the one meeting was going to take.
Madam Chair, do you want to go ahead and get a vote on that?
Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Aye.
Okay, all right. Okay, John?
All right. Thank you all the ranked pending employees who showed up to this. It's a real important thing for a lot of our employees, myself, my five years career. So, we're going to rank that the whole bunch, we're going to go into all of that, like the paying pending employees, we're going to watch this here, and dedicated employees to have ranked pending, very thankful for that. So, let's go ahead and start, we're going to start with. Okay, I'm going to include those, the people who are in the list for pardon, five years. Next, we have maintenance. That's it. I knew the one posted here. They told me it wasn't going to be first, but I lied.
Do you want to say a few?
Yes, for most of my years, I reported that. I was a coworker in the box, so in my mind, she's a huge asset to the community. It's gross. Just stop. Right now, it's just so.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next, we have family support, about sharing with the school, teenagers, and your, on your relatives, the fire. Do you want to do this? These ladies work so hard on behalf of children, for higher schools, for higher levels, they do such good work for children in distress, in distress, community in distress, truly working. These are truly wonderful people.
Thank you.
Hey, Michelle Gill, you're from Macaulay, you're from Europe. In your band, Michelle, Rebel Council.
After what you, Michelle.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome. You're the senior.
Michelle has done a great job transitioning with me coming on board three years ago, and she's picked up additional responsibility, uh, through a special event that is part of our county, and then she works with the city, she's done a major job, uh, quite. ago, and she's picked up additional responsibility, uh, through a special event, because that is part of our county, and then she works with the city, she's done a major job, uh, quite heavily advocating the number from, for this department, and she's had a great job, she's worked for the property.
All right, Michelle. We have insight from the jail. No, Jennifer Swetson has ten years, Mary Crosmann has eight years, so... Next, the library. Jennifer Harding, ten years. And Jessica Magley, ten years.
Question?
Castle Valley.
This one, very good. All right, are you going to put in a whole presentation? All right.
And here's Debbie, she does a big new job at the library, for everyone, incredible amount of public service, and everything that's great, and so on.
Thank you very much. Kevin Powell? Yeah? She has ten years. Let's see, search and rescue, Glenn Sherrill has ten years.
He's not here, but I am, so I'll take it, I'll just be now.
All right, thank you, Jim.
Glenn has got ten years, and we have a lot of great volunteers in Grand County Search and Rescue, put in many years, and four.
All right, thank you, appreciate it. Ruth Dillon? I'm on Dan. Now, I don't know if this could present, is someone from council? Mary? Or I'll talk, it doesn't matter.
She didn't even know.
No. It's not, if we're standing here, we should have asked.
A woman with many, many hats, I don't know anyone in the, in the works of the county that hasn't called her at least monthly, if not weekly, for assistance and help, and she does it bravely, she helps the county council, I mean, she's maybe in her spirit and attitude, and she's very...
Is Terry Meins here? No. Do you want to say something quickly, or?
Terry actually is on vacation, hey, once a part. I'm happy she's on vacation.
Terry Meins is our office manager, she is the glue of that office, and people that understand how much work she does, and how much she works, and she comes, and it's perfect to be, and it's anger for all of them, and it's all for her.
Next, just Debbie Littlefield, has fifteen years. Are you going to represent?
Wow, cool!
That is so cool. Our prior creator, Debbie Taylor?
Chris has the Alabama, and yeah, I present this to Debbie. I worked for Debbie for twelve years, I'm a treasure, and she did a awesome job, she's seen all of her work, and she's very, making sure every penny is accounted for. And Chris asked me to read this, and said, Debbie has been one of the most dedicated and reliable coworkers I have ever had in clearly good work. She is an incredible asset, and is one of the most welcomed and famous that's worked out. The close ties she has developed with so many employees and members are a testament to the ability, and thanks to that. Thank you, Debbie, for all of your years of service.
Okay, is Andrea in here? He's not, Andrea with the sand plats, twenty years.
I will.
You can do that.
Yeah, I was texting, I mean, I'm here. I would have had a meeting darned, it was the second page on here. Anyway, what I can say about Andrea is she is one of the, not only over and above, she's way over and above, much too technical, she achieves it, she's so collaborative. Out of the sand plats, she has outstanding work with road department, Bill is a favorite of people in the world. She's wonderful out there. B L M, sometimes State Land, many, many, you know, she's helped to present a budget to more than just the county council. Anyway, she's just been amazing, and so I've been sort of working with her half of that time, and I'm proud to be with her, and I just appreciate it.
And finally, the road department. About four, Tony Boy, ten years. We'll just call them all up, we'll get them one time.
All at once?
Okay, you can go in and visit, I don't care what you're, whatever you wanted to, it's ten years for her.
That's awesome. Andrea said Tony's running the luminar office, she's talking, that's everything you could describe. Pure appreciator, very well organized, self-moral, she's the frontline, front face, and sometimes on the phone, so she's kind of the face of the company, often, she does a great job, appreciator. Years.
Fifteen years. I don't know if I want to lead off this part. Come on in, here.
All right, Terry, what do you got? Really collaborative.
Probably give you a long...
Very collaborative with everybody, you know, he's worked a lot, Van Deres, do all of our clean, you know, we have parks that have two vehicles, very well organized, works well with our local people, keeps a button going in the shop, in and out of that shop, he's a hard worker, he's a real worker, he's a great manager, does it well, he does happily.
How about that?
And I appreciate all his hard work. No, not yet. Not today.
John Jackson, what a pride of years.
I can say a few things about him, too.
Be nice here.
I can say a lot of things. You know, John is in the last, oh, quite some time, but he's done a lot of our improvement projects, and he's a really good operator, good operator, very detailed, oriented, and got a great work ethic, and likes what he does, he's proud of what he does, so he puts a lot of effort into it, he does, he works, he does, he likes seeing a big product, I appreciate that, and he's like many of our crew, we look at, are the same, appreciate the work he does, and I'll make sure he gets us next year something.
And finally...
He's coming up. Don't worry, now, we're going to save the day, let me tell you about that.
Thirty-five years.
Warren's been here thirty-five years, and, you know, that guy, he knows everything there is to research and to name, and to grow, to utilize him, or, we're going to get you off. This, this Jim and Sealy, you know, when they were down man, and asking, hey, want to get on that ship, or, you know, run the test, and film trucks and stuff like that, you have to, and you go, hell, I've been here for five years, nothing back now. And he did, you know, I've been quite a few years since you've done it, he's certainly good, and he did a great job, so.
He just did, and he actually gets a little statue, but it has to remind him, he wants to be here tomorrow, so.
It's great to have guys like these, and, yeah, work with, and I appreciate every one of them.
All right, and for everybody, thank you.
I have a small presentation for our outgoing elected officials, one of them who's here, the other one's homesick. Andrew, thank you so much for your eight years of service. People like to take potshots at elected officials. You took more than one, and thank you very much, and enjoy, uh, working with the county.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Andrew.
Thank you.
And I have one for Diana, so we'll, you make sure she gets this.
Yeah.
Okay, now we can go to, back to item G, report on 217 Old Spanish Trail Arena.
Though we're nearly through 2018, I wanted to give a report on 217, 20717, so that we could review that, and also some information from subsequent years. I'll try and be brief, because we're running pretty late, but I've got a, I've given you a two-page document that I'm going to run through, it's just a sort of index, and I'll explain the documents and some of the figures. But the first one listed at the top left-hand corner is A Events, and that indicates how many events we've had each year, and if you can see the square section just below, below the metrics, it says the number of events per year. So we started off 2011, the 23, and you say these are rough numbers, because it's hard to decide what you're going to count, but it goes up to 174, or 132 in 2017, 174 this year. Now, it's depicted on the graph there, and I'll let you look at that later. We have a, the next couple of pages is B Events, and at the bottom of that, it sort of categorizes the events we've had, and it shows in yellow, well, on mine it's yellow, you probably got black and white copies, but it's a little bit, the juts at on the bottom, it says community and unpaid events, forty-eight, paid events, fifty-six, and then it says old events, twenty-eight, and they're the ones that are returning events to the arena. And then new events, events was seventy-six, and that gave us a total of two hundred and eight. Now, that includes a time set aside for public use, open writing especially, because we prepare the arena for open writing and archery and other little events, and sometimes they happen every night, so it's probably an exaggerated number of events, but that's when the arena is available for those community events. The next chart is C Events, and at the bottom there, on the last page, it says, community events, hundred and sixteen, paid events, thirty-six. We dropped off one person that was holding a weekly event, and it took us down to thirty-six from a normal fifty-six. The old events, hundred and twenty-one, and that's probably includes some repetitive stuff, so it exaggerates the figures a bit, but we, we've tried to keep track of everything, and that gives us an exaggerated total of three hundred and three events. So it's clearly a busy place, not all of them are paying unfortunately, but we're a community center which encourages public access to the property. The next sheet, D, it's D yearly revenue report. It shows that we raised revenue, probably seven thousand dollars from 216 to 217, and then another, what is that? Fourteen, some, fourteen or fifteen thousand for 2018. And what is standing out there is we've had a strategy to increase the revenue, and we've been focusing this year on overnight horse boarding, and we've done appetizers, we've had a strategy to increase it, and it's jumped up twelve to fifteen thousand dollars, we're not sure on the final event, but it's a significant increase in a year for just a small little part of the business. I like to call it a business, because we're trying to increase our revenue to support, you know, the amount of money that's outlaid on the arena. We have a strategy in place, and I'll probably present on that sometime in the future, but it's, we've divided the whole property up, there's sixty-four acres there, we've divided it theoretically into three, through theoretical divisions, and it is the ball field section, the arena section, and the outdoor arena section. So we've been working simultaneously on all of those areas to improve them and make them susceptible to income increases, and I'll explain a little bit more about that as we go through. The, if you go through the page E, import, impact report, and this is for 2017, it indicates that, according to our figures, and they're only rough, it could be a ten percent deviation in those, but we think we're bringing in about seventeen million dollars to the community through events like Jeep Safari, Rally on the Rocks, and our barrel races, we had roping competition that year, and even our soccer brings in a little bit, but we have, we've put a zero against that, because most of the people are from locally, and this report is only for people coming into the Moab area. And it's going on to impact report, we think that we're somewhere up around nineteen million for the community, so even if you cut off nine million of that, it's still a sizable impact on the community, so we're proud of that. Moving on to page G, drainage. I had a project in that year to develop a strategy to mitigate damage to neighboring properties. We collect a lot of water from 191 Highway, even the cliffs on the other side, on the west side, it seems to all flow down either through Rim Village or through our property, and possibly many other properties up the road. But the arrows indicate items of drainage that we're planning to put in, some we've already put in, and it's, the idea is to retain most of the water onsite and then release it slowly. So that's a work in progress, but it's already had some good effects. Next, you'll see page H, which is a photograph of the south side of the arena, it's retaining all the, our staff put in, and not an easy job to do. We were getting a lot of sand erosion, people driving down the bank that was there before the wall was in place, and it's developed to give us a little bit more room between the arena and that pile of sand that will be retaining more now, and also to beautify the place a bit. We're in a, about seventy percent through that project, it's sort of, it's got to have some capstones on the retaining wall, some riprap, stone across the bank that's, you can see there, and also a fence at the top to provide, to deter people from driving down. So it's neatened up the facility a bit, it's a lot more finished than it looks in the photograph. The next photo on H is Van E. The next photo on H is barn E, up in the north end of the site, shows it jacked off the ground there about 20, 20 inches. So the staff that work for us have jacked it up. They've poured concrete piers under each intersection of each wall and filled it up with sand again. There's somewhere around $25,000 saved by us doing that and putting it out to contract. So we've done, we're working on the last barn, which is our F barn, and we've just poured the concrete to that. So we've done a, just about, we've finished pretty much all the barns, so we're on to new projects next year. The next photo looks like, like a lot of tangled metal, but it's all the piers, rebar piers that were inserted into that building. And Greg, who's present here tonight, he's put all those together. We make, we get a contractor to bend the steel and we get it all into, in pallets, and he fabricates that ready for us to insert into the holes that we've bored under the, drilled under the building. So it gives you an extended, a sort of idea of the extent of the work that goes into that process. Photo K is a transmitter between the ball fields area and the arena, which we're trying to transmit pictures from security cameras from that area to the arena so that we can view them from home, from our office, or wherever we might be. So it's a work in progress also. We're having a bit of trouble, but it helps us keep track of the size of the events that happen there, so we can plan for the future. If there's an accident there, we, we're on top of that. We know what's taking place and we know how to overcome that situation in the future. And it does a lot of other things for us. And the final photo there is a improved version of a disinfectant system for the barns, which if we have a, well, it's a, an effort to prevent any generation of viruses from our arena in the horse community. So what it is, it, we pump a chemical through there when the horses are in the barns or after it's been used in a busy manner for a few weeks. And we pump chemical through there to kill any viruses, keeps down flies, and it also stops the dust a bit. So that's a, it's not quite finished on that barn, but it will go on, it will install it on every barn eventually, so we've got a bit of work to do there. But there's many more things I could tell you, but I think, you know, I've taken up enough time. So are there any questions on any of that?
No questions for me, Steve, but since I've been here in two years, I see the ingenuity and the work smarter approach that you have to things out of the arena and the costs that are saved, and I just appreciate your approach to your work, and thank you very much.
Yes. That's a team approach. The ideas come from everybody, but I make sure that they get an opportunity to instruct.
Great.
Thank you, Steve. Impressive. We are to action items, general business and action items. Item J, approving proposed bid award to purchase the mix.
Did we just skip Citizens to Be Heard?
I guess I did.
Close the door.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to. Just got out of order. This is the Citizens to Be Heard. We're, yes, I did. I checked off H and J and went straight to G.
Sorry about that.
This is Citizens to Be Heard. This is a time to be heard on an item that's not on the agenda. If you want to speak to an item on the agenda, fill one of these out and hand to us. If you have something to say, come up, state your name, and try to keep your statements to around three minutes. Thank you.
My name is Mark Barwin. As before, you know, I must say, your ability to attend these meetings week after week is beyond my comprehension. I've only been here an hour and a half, and I manage my own business here when I came here. But to that end, I would ask, as I've asked before, that you consider reformatting the agenda for council meetings so that Citizens to Be Heard shall follow the pledge of obedience, as though you considered Citizens to Be Heard as more important than these other issues. Would someone maybe take a note, perhaps you discussed that? Could you use your?
And we have discussed it.
We have. Our concern is that a lot of people, by putting it later on, people who work have a better opportunity to get here, and that's been the discussion that's gone back and forth and back and forth, is if it's later on in the agenda, if people work, they have an opportunity to be here and hear it.
All right.
So that's what's, what's been the debate and why we've gone back and forth on.
I appreciate knowing that, thank you. I'm curious if Mr. Clapper can hear me.
Are you still with us, Evan?
I was asking if Mr. Clapper could hear me. And to that end, since he obviously can't, and he can't hear other people, it's difficult to hear in this room, I'm curious why the man is considered to be the president of this meeting? When he slipped out, when the phone was hung up, for a period of time he wasn't here, there was no indication that he, that we didn't have a forum. And I, you know, I'm surprised if I come off, that guy even then I'm shaken. Those are my comments for tonight. Well, I don't see Mr. Clapper being, uh, hearing that. That's nice, my concern.
It is difficult. We do have a quorum without Evan, but it, it is difficult.
Floor is a quorum.
Floor is a quorum.
Yeah, participating through phone and the YouTube, the live YouTube feed lags a little bit.
It lags, and you, you know, unless you use these judiciously, you cannot be heard on YouTube. And do you care that the citizens hear? Why send it out on YouTube if you're not speaking into your microphone? You don't have to yell into a microphone, but you have to use them so that they're, you're audible. That's my only comment.
I appreciate knowing. I understand correctly.
Thank you.
What happened to our, just on that subject real quick, what happened to our X-Files mics? Those were working good.
Oh, they would squeak.
But you could hear us.
I don't know, but I can tell you I had a conversation just today with our IT director about how we can make it even better. It's been getting better over the years, but it's still problematic in here, and it does kind of come down to budget is part of it. There's a lot of troubleshooting and a lot of different reasons for interference and so forth where we were getting those screeching mics, but we can certainly go back to trying that again. Absolutely, we've got them, so we'll try it next time.
Okay. Yes. And that is, it's, it's a hard decision to know whether to maybe even have, maybe we could put by Citizens to Be Heard 5 o'clock and know that whenever 5 o'clock comes around, we have Citizens to Be Heard as an idea. Anyway, we can, we can look at that because there has been discussion. Okay, now we are, did I miss anything else?
Nope.
We've been skipping around.
Let's get ready to roll here.
Okay. We are on item J, approving proposed bid award to purchase a mixture of grass seed as part of the Noxious Weed Invasive Species Management Grant. Tim, he was here earlier. There, oh, you're here for him. Yes, want to come up to the, and introduce yourself?
Yes, hello, my name is Robbie Wood. I'm the technician for Tim, the weed department. Yeah, and the, yeah, you said it right, we, we're getting a bid for purchasing some grass seed for some restoration out on the far edge of Grand County, in the Dolores Triangle, and also upriver road on some private property. Yeah, I don't really know.
So I will move to approve the proposed bid award to purchase the mixture of grass seeds as part of the Noxious Weed Invasive Species Management Grant in the amount of $16,812.87, and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Motion by Curtis Wells, second by Greg Halliday. Discussion?
Who is the, who's it being awarded to?
Whoever bid at that amount.
Southwest Seed Incorporated.
Okay, somehow we missed that in the motion. It's, we need to get that in the, in the minutes.
Okay, so we will amend the motion to say Southwest Seed, Inc. Southwest Seed, Inc. Okay.
Thank you.
Is that all in favor of the amended motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, there you are, Evan. Aye, he is here. Thank you, Evan. So the motion passes 5 to 0. We are to item K, approving proposed interlocal agreement with Grand County Emergency Medical Service, Special Service District for transitioning all county department assets and liabilities, inventory, and employees to the new district pending legal review. Andy.
Hello. This is the, this is the final step. I'll speak up because I was watching YouTube, that's why I didn't come in. But this is the kind of the final, one of the final steps, we, there's still one lagging thing, is the final step in kind of this transition process, this authorizes the county to go ahead and transfer the assets from the EMS service, including the fund balance and ambulances, things like that, to the district after the January 1st date. There are several provisions in there. We worked with Chris pretty closely on making sure that we got everything figured out, and we did get legal review back from Andrew's office, and it looked like everything was fine, other than some, some, yeah, some minor formatting issues, but everything else looked, looked good.
Motion to approve the attached interlocal agreement and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents, even though I wish you weren't separating from us.
Can I always come join you?
Never. Never Skywalker.
A motion by Curtis, second by Greg. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes 5 to 0.
And while Andy is walking away, this is his last county council meeting with us. It's been a pleasure supervising you. Difficult at times, but a pleasure.
I know that. Thanks.
Okay. Approving proposed interlocal agreement with the City of Moab governing the transfer of funds to support strategic planning and operations related to the active transportation and trails. Zachariah Levine.
Okay, so I'm presuming that after tonight, the officials, my department will be taking on the active transportation trails position. And we've got a variety of work items already slated for January and February in taking on the former Trail Mix employees, who initiated the conversation, though we had success in getting some money out of the city to help cover the costs of those employees coming onto the county. So this interlocal agreement governing the transfer of funds, as noted in the UJ episode, it is specified that up to $45,000, $15,000 is slated for strategic planning countywide, not known as trails, and active transportation, and $30,000 is for operational costs, meaning the planning, design, construction, and maintenance of trails, active transportation infrastructure within city limits. That is very clear. That should be an annual contribution, whereas the $15,000 is a one-time contribution. The IAA does extend for two years, which was as far out as the city could go. It's received legal review from our county attorney-elect, and there's back and forth. My office has been, well, I've been pretty involved in writing that. I wrote the initial draft, if I've been involved in subsequent work, so I'm pretty happy with where it's at now. Great for working on that. Chris, do you want to add anything, if you'd like to look at it as well?
No, thanks, looks good. I appreciate the city working with us on it.
I would move to approve this interlocal agreement with the City of Moab governing the transfer of funds to support strategic planning and operations related to active transportations and trails and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Motion by Curtis Wells, second by Greg Halliday. Further questions? I like the fact that the city and the county are working so closely on this together. That's good news. I see, no further discussion? I'll call for a vote. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Evan? Did we lose you? I think we lost Evan. Okay, passes 4 to 0. Evan, right now, is not on the phone. Do we want to try to reach him again? I know there was agenda items he was concerned about. Okay. Hello, Evan?
Let's try to get him back online. He should be able, he should be able to call back in, right, on the conference?
Item M, adopting proposed ordinance approving the Vista Antigua Planned Unit Development Phase 1 Final Platte, Zachariah.
Okay, so this is the follow-up meeting to the legal reading of the vote here. The work is, we should approve Phase 1 of the planned unit development Vista Antigua. This is the final plat approval. 13 lots are proposed in this phase, a total of 34 lots subdivision. Our office presented on the proposed subdivision in the last meeting. We have not received any additional public comments, and we have submitted all of the necessary paperwork to get this phase recorded. So that includes the subdivision improvements agreement, final plat, construction cost estimate, required infrastructure.
Any questions? Have a motion?
Yeah, I would move to adopt the proposed ordinance approving the Vista Antigua Planned Unit Development Phase 1 Final Plat and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Motion by Curtis Wells, seconded by Greg Halliday. Any discussion? Okay, call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, are you, you're back. Welcome back. Passes 5 to 0. We are out now on item N, adopting proposed ordinance amending the land use code for a high-density housing overlay. Zachariah Levine.
Okay, so, let's see, high-density housing, we've talked about this for a couple of years now. Planning Commission for quite some time, people are, they recommended approval to the county council. We've been held a series of workshops and public hearings, county council. The workshop hearing dates would be October 16th, November 7th, the 20th, and 27th, and December 4th. At the December 4th meeting, county council directed staff to work on a series of amendments to the high-density housing overlay as it was recommended by the planning commission on September 25th. So in your agenda summary, I've noted the amendments that we executed in the redlined version of the ordinance, or the code language, and I can go through those now, point by point. So each of these changes was discussed at one of the workshops or county council meetings, and so they shouldn't be news, but I'm happy to respond further to any of them that you'd like to discuss, and then of course, council members will want to discuss each or all of them as well, yourselves. So we haven't received any additional public comments, I will note that, so. None of the changes are reflective of the comment that has come in since we all talked last. So we're going to go through the amendments now, so in section 4.7.1E. And I guess, before I get started there, I have renumbered all of the sections so that they do fit with the code language appropriately. The numbering system that you may have gotten used to before, it's just a little bit of previous drafts, but now we're glad what it actually happened and adopted. of previous drafts, but, uh, but now we're glad what it actually happened to adopt. So, section four point seven point one E, um, added an additional statement clarifying legislative intent for portation between the issued housing ordinance and high-density housing overlay, ensuring that the public acknowledges, uh, you know, the sort of comprehensive vision, uh, of the housing policy package. Uh, in four point seven point two B, the reference to the minimum blood claim was removed because that is addressed also in the land use code. It didn't seem necessary to be removed, and it's also addressed in the Final Platte approval and building code as well. Four point seven point three A, um, uh, you have another legal memo in your red folder addressing the, uh, exceptions to the act of replacement requirement for retirees and unemployed single parents. We did remove those because despite council's request to investigate further, uh, we just simply could not find a resolution to the, uh, exception issue without opening up, uh, for lack of a better word, loopholes, uh, for taking to a new policy. That may be a point of consideration that the council wants to discuss further, basically balancing these exceptions for retirees and unemployed single parents with the potential for misuse of the code. I don't have a, a good answer for you. Uh, we've discussed this a few times, and I think, uh, you know, our decision, let's just pull them out at this stage, and if, uh, down the road, we can find a better resolution for, like, the issues during implementation of the, the ordinance that we consider is, uh, is disappointing, because that may be to council persons. So, um, four point seven point five C, number two, uh, we added an additional statement clarifying legislative intent behind establishing the minimum design standards. And then, in four point seven point five C, in sections two, five, and seven, we added additional design standards related to screening, exterior finishes, architectural design, height setbacks, and parking. Uh, so there are some meaningful changes in the code there. You should be able to see those all in the redlined versions, but, uh, those changes came out of a request from council to, um, you know, add some, add some strength and specificity to the minimum design standard. We felt like the redlined changes that are included struck a nice balance between achieving that legislative goal and not, uh, over-regulating this, uh, the uses of this overlay, and also, uh, you know, keeping it comprehensible for, uh, inexperienced developers, just, you know, otherwise, um, uh, you know, making sure that they were, the regulations were workable for those. In four point seven point eleven, we added additional text to clarify the effect of HDH overlay approval. Again, the goal here was to eliminate the, uh, potential for developers or, or owners seek to seek HDH approval strictly for purposes of speculation, like, uh, capturing appreciation and value. In four point seven point one three, uh, we added the unit-based sunset or expiration clause such that after five hundred units are constructed in the HDH overlay, uh, where it gets applied, that the ordinance would automatically terminate. So, this, the legislative goal here, uh, was to have an additional safeguard, uh, against, you know, rapid growth or too much growth, uh, that addresses concerns about resources, water, infrastructure, water, sewer, uh, you know, just general community character, you know, the identity, neighborhood character, uh, and, and then, uh, there were several amendments to the map, so the boundaries of the HDH districts. Uh, all of these follow from conversations had, jobs and insurance. I would say that, uh, in addition to all of the amendments that I just went through, staff that are working on, uh, the, uh, the design standards in particular continually noted to each other that, uh, that we felt like those would be reasonable additions to the land use code writ large, but, uh, you know, the exercise is constructive in terms of identifying a balanced approach to, uh, establishing, you know, a minimum standard for development quality in Grand County without being overly heavy-handed. So, while I'm not the subject of today's, you know, action item, potential action item, uh, just a heads up that, you know, that could be a good direction for the county to go, uh, and, uh, that could include additional standards related to low-impact design and landscaping that is, you know, water-wise and conscious of, uh, changing climate, so, um, and that could be, so, that's what I have for you. Happy to answer your specific questions. We talked a lot about this in county pass course. This is, uh, input all along the way. I feel very strongly that that, but hasn't been taken into the proposed ordinance. Someone is not one-hundred percent satisfied with it, uh, doesn't go far enough, or it goes way too far. I think that what we've captured, uh, is a fairly balanced approach, and there's a lot of changes along the way due to, like, input that needs to be, uh, our staff to figure out.
On these additions that your staff is, wants us to consider, can that be added later? Or would that be an issue? Well, that you mentioned in, at the bottom, in the addition to...
Those are current, like, other sections of the land use code. So, I remember from the last meeting, uh, when we were discussing, you know, potential for adding new standards for design quality, uh, I mean, the, or I, I responded at one point with a rhetorical question. Well, maybe rhetorical question, maybe just that, uh, question stimulates some conversation, but, uh, I asked whether you felt like you wanted to impose some design quality standards on developments in the proposed HDH overlay that wouldn't be imposed on, um, just standard development. Why should the HDH developments be subject to these additional standards?
So, rather put them into all of the, okay, I, I, okay, I understand.
Now, that said, I mean, I, I think that Ben Foster and Clapper did make a good point that in exchange for the, you know, additional development rights offered by the high-density housing overlay, it was reasonable to respect the higher standard development. Um, you know, I think there is, um, some basis to that as well, and so, like I said, I think what we, what we presented is a balanced approach to that.
I entertain a motion. Evan? Are you with us?
Uh, sorry. I, I need to get my, I would, uh, move to adopt the proposed ordinance amending land use code for high-density housing overlay and authorize Chair to sign all associated documents.
Motion by Evan Clapper. Well, I, um, believe our, uh, we sent our department, our community development department a few years ago to, to go ahead and find incentives to help with our affordable housing situation. And that is what they did, and they've spent two years, long years of working, more than two years, working on this. As many people who are opposed to it, there are just as many people who are looking forward to this opportunity to create and develop affordable housing. And I feel that it is shallow words when we, as elected officials, say we are concerned and we want to do something and we want to help with the affordable housing issue in this community, and yet we don't, I don't, I want to finish mine, don't have our opportunity to move this forward, I think is a shame.
My point of order is, I'm not sure that Roberts' rules allows for a lecture when there's a motion on the floor. If there's a failure to a second, the rules of this chamber do not allow for you to go on and lecture the other members of this body at will.
I think you're the pot calling the kettle black.
Well, the rules are the rules.
I, I don't think I've...
Do we follow the rules or not?
These, I am following the rules. I have a right to my statement.
We need a second.
Yeah.
Do we have a second? Can the chair second? Motion fails by a second. For lack of a second.
Chair, can we have some, if we have discussion about that?
I don't know if there's any need. I mean, we've discussed this to the nth degree and, uh, had a workshop where we spent two hours. And I don't know if there's any need. If you have something you want to say, yes, you can say it. You are a county council person, and you have the right to say. I just don't know if there's anything else to be said. Approving contract award to, uh, Montgomery Archaeology Consultants for the development and implementation of historical properties, treatment plans for Phase Two runway expansion at Canyon Lansfield Airport.
Okay, uh, the airport was built out there in sixty-five and eighty-five. The runway was realigned to where it's aligned as it does now. At that time, down off of Blue Hills Road, there were a couple of areas that were listed as possibly eligible for listing on National Places of Discovered Sites. There was some lipic scatter, is the archaeology term, of some chips of rocks found down there. So, that's been sitting at the end of the runway into the airport property, uh, well, for a thousand years or so, but we know about it for, since the eighties. When we did our large runway expansion, uh, prior to that, we went through a full environmental assessment. Before that, we received a finding of no significant impact. However, there's a stipulation in the Fonzie, in order to go for the second phase, we first had to mitigate the, uh, issues associated with the, uh, property or the historic relics that were found down there. Now, our runway was built, um, it was actually lengthened by a little bit, but we can't use all of it for both directions of flight, uh, because we need a, uh, safety area off the end of the runway. So, we have what's called a displaced threshold right now. Phase two is basically getting rid of that displaced threshold. We'll do that by relocating a wash, relocating Blue Hills Road by a couple hundred feet, and then just having a safe runout area at the end of that pavement. Um, in order to do that, we first have to deal with the, uh, historical evidence that was found at that end. To that end, we put out an, uh, an RFQ that was, uh, published, although we didn't get a multiple inquiries about it, only one firm, uh, replied to that, and that was a locally based, actually a Moab-based firm, Montgomery Archaeological. They are capable of doing this. There is a definite cost associated with this. However, it's money we already have in the bank. We were able to, even though it's Phase Two of the runway project, working with the FAA last year, we were elected to acquire that funding with the, uh, large runway grant we got to do the construction. So, the grant funding is there, as well as the set aside matches for the county issues, as well as the state, uh, funding associated with it. They threw out a very big number of five hundred thousand, but we definitely think it will be significantly, you know, half or less than that. Like I said, we have funding for up to five hundred thousand, which is well beyond, um, what would be needed unless we find, um, the biggest archaeological find ever, once we start investigating, highly probable. Only, like I said, one firm did that. There, in your pamphlet, you'll, uh, a couple pages back, um, there is the ordinance regarding conflicts of interest, and I put in there, so, like, one of the principals of the company, Joey Patterson, he is a volunteer member on the advisory airport board, as well as a volunteer member of historical preservation. Uh, he, that was indicated both in the discussion at the airport board, as well as in the cover letter to the RFQ, just, and so he stayed out of the discussion, other than as someone being interviewed or asked questions by the other board members. It was recommended fairly to, by the airport board at this month's meeting, um, with Mr. Patterson abstaining from that vote.
Would you, uh, are you willing to give, or able to give us just a brief refresher on exactly, uh, which sites and what they found they're referring to? So, I know this area pretty well, and I'm looking at a half a million dollar price tag for the mitigation of these historic sites, and I'm...
And we put, it's, like we said, we think that is a vast, vast overestimate, but we don't know until we dig down. Um, if you give me a second, let me see what I can find.
Just for the record, so that we can, I, you, we've run across this before, but I don't remember specifically what the sites consist of at this point.
In essence, we're looking at Blue Hills Road. The runway goes fairly close, or the airport property goes up to Blue Hills Road and down to the property extend beyond our defense, past that. If I could quickly draw on the board, might...
Well, I'm, I'm, just to clarify, I know which, the general area, I'm just wondering the details regarding the, the...
What did they, what did they find? What did they find?
What are their, what are their concerns?
It's called lipic scatter, so, in the original nineteen eighty-five, um...
Stone tools.
Yeah, it, I'm seeing if I can find the original, just a review, eighty-five.
A little more beyond the broken arrowhead, but it was maybe broken spearhead, um, and
then some chipped rocks. Basically, talking with unofficially, it's basically indications of several times where, like, a hunting party camp. It's not the, it's not indications of, of permanent structure like a grain silo or some of the stuff we see.
That's crazy.
Um, and so we, a very huge number was put out, so we could get the funding that if we found something huge.
But it makes me concerned on their end, right? Because they're going to be incentivized to find something and to dig and to, I mean, that's a pretty big, that's a big number, right?
It is a big number, but...
To find an arrowhead, to find an arrowhead anywhere.
Right. It's definitely beyond arrowhead. It definitely goes to chipped stone tools, um, but there wasn't any original work of those sites. There were three sites, two of which were listed as possibly eligible for, um, listing.
Why don't we reduce the...
There wasn't any pottery or anything like that, you know?
So, what, what's the argument against reducing the number? Fiscal impact number?
Uh, we already, it's already, the grant's already been established, and we will only pay for the services needed.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, that's just the amount of money that was allocated within that line item. Yeah, that's just the amount of money that was allocated within that line item of the runway construction grant.
To appease my concern and frustration, if you would just circle back with me when this is done, and we know what it costs.
Absolutely.
And with, sorry, go ahead, Terry.
Well, I was just wondering what the projected timeline is.
It will be, what we'll do, if they are recommended, then we'll work with them to develop a specific plan of action. We're looking at weeks to months if nothing significant is found. I get we're, all we have is the surface, and what we think is we're finding surface where indicated transient activities, historic, or transient historical activities. But we're assuming that we're not finding the Great Pyramid until we dig down.
So, so, so whatever they find, they'll document, remove it, to where?
That is kind of what, that's what part of this plan is. It's a matter of, does it get, to my understanding, when things like this happen, sometimes they're left in place. Sometimes they're, depending on what's found, if, you know, it could be something like a brand new species of dinosaur or something like that, that they weren't looking for, which one they will deal with, the museum, however university needs.
Yeah, it'd be nice to go to the museum.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it truly depends on what is found. All we know is that there is some stuff on the surface that indicates there was some activity sometime in the last couple thousand years. And because it's federal funding, we have to make sure and figure out what was there, so we can at least preserve the knowledge that's to be learned from that.
Madam Chair, with that, I would move to approve the contract award to Montgomery Archaeological Consultants for Development and Implementation of Historic Properties Treatment Plan for Phase Two Runway Expansion at Canyon Lansfield Airport, and authorize this chair to sign all associated documents.
Motion by Curtis Wells, seconded by Greg Halliday. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Evan? Evan? I think he was staying on for the high density overlay. Okay.
Aye, aye, aye. My muir button is not cooperating.
Your muir button is not cooperating, okay. All in, that makes it five to zero, passes five to zero. Okay, item P. Adopting proposed requirements for taxi lane development at Canyon Lansfield Airport.
With the question, I'd like to speak on this for about two minutes and then ask that it be moved on to see if you can understand what we're dealing with here. We've grown insanely quickly. We're actually out of space for people to build new structures out there, and people want to. There's actually several more on the agenda of new hangars wanting to be built. Problem is, we don't have the, a taxi lane is the asphalt that drives in front of a hangar where people can then pull up into the hangar. We don't have any time. After the deadline was needed, I couldn't make it in on this agenda, so there actually is a cost, I have numbers to go with this, but they're not presented here, and I can go into greater detail at the next meeting. What the basis of this is, some people may be interested in building a hangar, if only if there is the established airport infrastructure in place. We want to present a pathway if an entity wants to build a hangar and then put in that infrastructure ahead of our time line, because it's one of those things we can get federal funding for, but it's way down the list. It's, it's years and years out before we could allocate our entitlement grant funding to build that. But we want to set in mind a, an explicit set of standards for that development. We basically don't want someone to go and put in enough asphalt to hold a 2,000 pound piece of equipment, whether it be plane, helicopter, whatever, and then the person, the next person down needs to have 50 miles to top of string. So we want to have a uniform standard put into place. So I can go into greater detail, but if possible, if you could table that.
Postpone it.
Okay, yeah. Motion to postpone.
Motion to postpone item P. Adopting proposed requirement for taxi lane development at Canyon Lansfield Airport. Motion by, to postpone by Curtis Wells, seconded by Terry Morris. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Five to zero.
You bring it up next. That will be in the, I just didn't need the deadline.
Adopting proposed resolution amending the 2018 budget, Chris Baird.
There is skip Q.
I did.
Oh, yeah.
I did, I did.
I don't think we're ready for it, but we have to postpone it.
Motion to postpone.
Post, motion to postpone ratifying the 2019 healthcare renewal contract. Motion by Curtis Wells, seconded by Greg Halliday.
What is it we're voting on?
We're postponing the ratifying.
Q.
Q. Of 2019 healthcare renewal, because we still don't have it. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Now, we're adopting, am I in the right place? Adopting proposed resolution amending the 2018 budget, Chris Baird.
Okay. So we had our public hearing on December 4th, and I don't believe we received any public comment on this particular resolution amending the 2018 budget. The majority of the changes come as a result of the retroactive cost of living adjustment, a few newly approved positions, and refinements of revenue and expense projections. Since the public hearing, there are a few changes that were made to this budget, mostly having to do with increasing the budget for the purposes of litigation. There's several appeals that are now in the courts for the value of centrally assessed property in Grand County and other surrounding counties. And so we've agreed to be a party to that, and I believe that the judge has allowed us to intervene in that lawsuit. It's a, it's not so much a matter of our revenue, because if these values go down, then the certified tax rate will go up, we'll still end up collecting the same amount of money. The difference is that the citizens of Grand County that live here will end up paying a lot more. And so we're really fighting on behalf of the local property taxpayers on that one. And the deputy legal services line item in the attorney's budget also needs quite a bump to cover the HB 224 litigation, as well as criminal prosecution expenses that we're incurring from a contracted attorney right now. I made a mistake with this last line, adding the $140,000 in pass-through funding in B Roads for SITLIS easements. That's actually an amendment to the 2019 budget, not the 2018 budget.
Question?
Go ahead.
So, Chris, in the increasing the deputy legal services expense in the attorney's budget to cover HB 224 litigation and contract criminal prosecution expenses, can you just explain that to me? And we approved a job description for a deputy attorney.
That's next year.
And that, so that, these are just basically expensive, okay.
That's for this, that's for 2018.
Okay, right. So these deputy legal services are just basically legal services that we contract out?
That's right, yeah.
Okay, so what, what were those amounts? Do you?
So, let's see, I think I factored in, we went from about, we're, year to date right now, about $219,000, and I bumped it up to $160,000. Hopefully that will cover it. I contacted Parv Brown-Gee and Lovelace, who are, they do a lot of other civil advisement for us, but they're also conducting the litigation for HB 224, and they advised me that there, there could be, there may not necessarily be, but there could be up to $30,000 more expense this year for that. There's already about $20,000 in bills still coming. I don't know that that's necessarily all HB 224, but it's predominantly to cover that.
So roughly 50K in legal expenses for HB 224, expected?
I'm not sure how much. I haven't run a detail exactly on how much has been spent so far, so I can't really say. I know that it's going to be, that we're going to need up to $30,000 more.
Okay.
They didn't, they didn't say that that's exactly how much it would be, but it's, that's what they recommended. Any other questions on the modified 2018 budget?
I would move to adopt the attached resolution amending the 2018 budget as presented, and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Motion by Curtis, seconded by Greg. Any further questions or discussions? This is not roll call, correct? Even though it's budget? No, okay. All in favor?
Did you have a second? Who was the second?
Greg.
Greg?
And passes five to zero. Now we are at adopting, on proposed resolution, adopting the 2019 budget.
Okay, we had our public hearing for the 2019 Grand County budget on December 4th, again, received no public comments. And again, the only major change from what you saw at the public hearing was the inclusion of that $140,000 for the payment of SITLIS easements, but that will be reimbursed by the Community Impact Board, so it's just passed through. Any questions on the 2019 budget?
Seeing none? Yes, you have a question?
I'd like to make a motion. I, I move to adopt the attached resolution approving the Grand County 2019 budget and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Motion by Greg Halliday, seconded by?
Terry.
Terry Morris. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes five to zero. We are now into adopting a proposed resolution approving position pay plan, employee pay plan, step and grade and new reclassification or re-titled positions January 1st, 2019. Chris Baird.
So, yeah, in the interest of trying to be efficient, I took four actions and wrote a, this particular resolution to cover those with their associated exhibits. And so the first component is the position pay plan. And so the position pay plan has, it establishes the salary ranges for our positions irrespective of the employees that hold them. And the second component is the employee pay plan, which specifies the step within the grade that's been assigned to positions based on employees, generally speaking, with the employees' time with the county. And then also proposing a new step and grade chart to go with all these plans, because our current step and grade chart isn't entirely useful to us anymore. The bottom part of it doesn't adhere to any proposed positions. And then the fourth component is to approve the new and/or reclassified positions that we discussed during our Budget Advisory Board meetings, and also contained in, as Exhibit
So I move to adopt the attached resolution approving the Grand County Position Pay Plan, Employee Pay Plan, Step and Grade Chart, and reclassify positions, and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Second.
Motion by Terry, seconded by Curtis Wells. All in favor? Any discussion?
Well, just a brief discussion is, I appreciate all the work that's been put into this, Chris, and I know that you've, you've spent a lot of time taking the market data and cleaning it up, and this was, you know, a very contentious issue last year that we took a lot of flak over, but I'm just appreciative of the work that the Budget Advisory Board has put into this, and very appreciative to the, the employees of Grand County for being patient with us so that we could measure twice and cut once. And, you know, the issue's never been, do we appreciate our employees, but to make sure that when making decisions like this, that there's transparency with the finances and that we're implementing correct data so that we don't have to revisit these things in the future and clean up messes like we have. So just thanks for everyone that's participated, and a special thank you to the Grand County employees for being patient as we work through this.
Any further discussion? All in favor of motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes, passes five to zero. U. Adopting proposed ordinance increasing the salaries of elected officials separate from the county council members.
Okay. We held a public hearing on December 4th for this agenda item as well, and again, received no public comment. As I indicated in the agenda summary and the resolution, we used the same market-based averaging process to come to these values as we did for the rest of the non-elected employees. Happy to answer any questions if you have them.
No questions. I would move to adopt the proposed ordinance increasing the salaries of elected officials separate from county council members, and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Okay, motion by Curtis Wells, seconded by Terry Morris. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes five to zero.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. V. Adopting proposed ordinance increasing the salaries of the county, Grand, county council members, Chris Baird.
Okay. We also held a public hearing for this on December 4th and received no public comments. Same as before, these salaries were based on market averages for part-time county legislators, and so used the same process as we did for the rest of the other elected officials, as well as all of the non-elected employees.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I move to adopt proposal ordinance increasing the salaries of county council members, and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Motion by Greg Halliday, seconded by Terry Morris. Any further discussion?
Yeah, you know, I've already taken some flak over this, being reported in the paper from some constituents, but the expectation for council members to cover what we need to for $970 a year is a pretty big sacrifice, and you do see work fall through the cracks. This, this still puts us at a place where, correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, we'd be the lowest paid legislative members in the state?
No, that's where you are now.
Okay.
But you'll be on average if you approve this.
So I do see this.
No, we aren't average.
I do see this as a, you know, in the, in the name of fairness to all the elected officials, and for the citizens, you know, putting the county in a position to deeper the engagement by the legislative body. And it's something that, if it was done over time like it should, it puts us in a bad position to have to do this all at once, which is, which is where you get the heartburn. But that buck stops at our desk, and we're getting that in line, so the next group doesn't have to make such a drastic adjustment, so I think it's a good thing.
Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five passes five to zero. We are at the consent agenda. Is there anything in the consent agenda that anyone wants to pull out of consent agenda and discuss? Okay, we will read them. Everybody read like four, I think we get through it.
How about I'll go until I can't go?
Okay, go.
All right. Item W, ratifying the chair's signature on proposal for the excavation of the waterwell pipe leak in the amount of $6,621 at Canyon Lansfield Airport. Item X, approving proposed ground lease for the construction of a hangar with Ken Lord at Canyon Lansfield Airport. Item Y, approving proposed ground lease for construction of a hangar with Ben Bird at Canyon Lansfield Airport. Approving renew, item Z, approving renewal of the Utah Local Government Trust liability
Approving renew, item Z, approving renewal of the Utah Local Government Trust Liability and Workers Compensation Insurance. Item double A, approving renewal of contract with Bear Cloud Software for STR Helper and Overnight Rental Monitoring Service. Item double B, approving twenty nineteen annual meeting schedule for the county council. Item double C, approving proposed letter to three individual taxpayers denying the reconvening of the local board of equalization in order to protect the state code process due to the individuals having missed the September fifteenth, twenty eighteen deadline to appeal the evaluation or the equalization of their real property. Item double D, adopting proposed resolution amending resolution number thirty-eight-eight that updated the Safety and Accident Review Committee and the Accident Review Policy in order to remove emergency medical services representatives as a voting member due to no longer being a county department. Item double E, approving proposed easement agreement with San Juan County for the purpose of constructing a connector road to be used only for ingress, egress, utilities, and maintenance. Item double F, approving proposed geographic information system support block with GIS Inc. Double G, approving proposed job descriptions as redrafted and reformatted by Personnel, Systems, and Services for the Clerk Auditor's Office. Number one, Chief Deputy Clerk. Two, Deputy Clerk Payroll. Three, Deputy Clerk Three. Four, Deputy Clerk Two. Five, Deputy Clerk One. Double H, approving proposed job descriptions for Trail Mix employees to be placed with the Community and Economic Development Department effective January first, twenty nineteen, transferred from Canyonlands National History Association. Number one, Active Transportation and Trails Manager. Two, Active Transportation and Trails Operations Coordinator. Three, Active Transportation and Trails Technician. Item double I, approving proposed job descriptions for Thompson Welcome Center employees to be placed with the Moab Area Travel Council effective January one, twenty nineteen, transferred from Canyonlands USA Inc., AKA Canyonlands Travel Region. One, Thompson Welcome Center Manager. Two, Thompson Welcome Center Representative. Double J, approving proposed job description for a part-time social media specialist to be placed with the Moab Area Travel Council effective January first, twenty nineteen. Double K, approving proposed job description for an IT GIS support technician to be placed with the Information Technology Department effective January one, twenty nineteen. Item double L, approving proposed job description and reclassification from the Lead Maintenance Technician to Assistant Director to be placed with the Old Spanish Trail Arena Rec Complex effective January one, twenty nineteen. Sold!
Very good.
Not an archaeologist.
Boy, that was excellent.
An archaeologist auctioning.
Very well done. Okay, motion to accept the consent agendas by Curtis Wells, seconded by Terry Morris. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, passes five to zero. Discussion item MM, calendar items and public notices. Thank you, Curtis, you did a very, that was excellent.
Good to just get it out of the way.
Oh, I know. The Nature Conservancy, or the Conservation District, excuse me, the Conservation District no longer meets at Old Spanish Trail, they meet in, at Moab Regional Hospital in one of their board, what do they call it, their meeting rooms? Same days. Same day, same time, different place. All from, from now on, they've moved, they, they no longer have their meetings at the Old Spanish Trail, they now have them at Moab Regional Hospital. Yeah, you have it on the right day, on second Tuesday of every month at two o'clock. You have it there. It's just at Old. I'm sorry, I, I apologize, I apologize, I could have been much clearer, I apologize. I know, on, it's always on the second Tuesday at two o'clock, but rather than at Old Spanish Trail, it is now at Moab, it's not, Moab Regional Hospital, yeah, Moab Regional Hospital. Two applications, we're going position. Okay, we don't have any public hearings, we do have a closed session. Motion by Curtis Wells to go into closed session to discuss purchase, exchange, lease or sale of real property, seconded by Greg Halliday.